Good evening, everyone. I will, I'm glad everyone is here. Glad that the last two and a half weeks are over with, with all the cold weather and everything. It was, I hope everyone got out of that safely with their homes and everything. So, before we get started with this March Planning Commission meeting, I'm going to stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Covert's going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come hear issues on behalf of the city tonight, Lord. We ask that you give us wisdom in making these decisions. We ask that you be with the President and his staff, the Governor and his staff, and the Mayor and his staff, Lord of Springdale, and give us the direction we need to go forward with this city to lift you up. We ask these things in Jesus' name tonight. Amen.
Roy was going to add to his invocation, but I'll work to get you guys out of here as quick as possible. I think there's a race back game this evening that people want to fill the seats.
Lord, let the Hogs win.
But we'll go quick as possible on there. Thank you, guys, for coming to our March 2, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I'll call this meeting to order if we can do roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And do we have any questions for the February minutes? Okay. If not, if we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The first item, I'm actually pulling something forward on here because it's actually going to be coming off the agenda, but Jim Reed, we've got All American Steakhouse. They had asked for a variance, but I think they have the ability to work through that, so.
How y'all doing tonight? Jim Reed, 9460 Old Drive. I'm here representing Mark Basic, Mark and Laura Basic, the All American Steakhouse. We have asked for this variance, but we have decided we don't need it. We've got a way to work around it. Mark would like to ask y'all or talk to y'all about the new steakhouse.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for moving us up on the agenda, and I wanted to come tonight and just be here to answer any questions.
We are converting- Keep talking to that mic.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
We are converting the Western Sizzling at 3492 West Sunset into the All American Steakhouse and Sport Theater. We're working through it. We're still working through the financing, working with our bank. You know, there's a COVID thing that's going on, and it's just not as easy as it used to be, but we are, we've got a trained management team that's ready. We've got plans. We've got the permit. We're still working to do it. We're going to be very proud to be in Springdale, excited to be in Springdale, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to meet them later, answer them, and just whatever, but thanks for the opportunity.
Great. We appreciate it. Glad you guys were able to work through the variance on there as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. First section that we have on here is public hearing. We have proposed amendment to the Springdale Code of Ordinance, Chapter 130, zoning ordinance, to add Article 4, Section 5.5, seed, Springdale elective enhancement district.
Okay, as y'all will remember, we've worked for the last several months on this optional extension of our Form Based Code to two areas, one to the north and one to the south of the downtown Form Based Code. It will work as if the property owners want to engage this. They will come before with a request and ask for it to be changed, using those regulatory plans as the guidelines for what district it will go into, and then all their development will have to meet the Form Based Code. But I want to stress, it is optional. It gives us a chance to expand, and I think it gives us some opportunities to bring some development in those areas that's not, and I know it's not available in the current zoning, and I think we've had a good response. We've had a good response from some of the property owners and the stakeholders in the area, and we're ready to move this forward to council. If it is recommended for approval tonight, it will go to council next Tuesday evening. And I can answer any other questions if anybody has any.
Yes, this is a public hearing, so any questions or comments from the audience? Anyone online? Okay. To the commission? This be a recommendation?
Recommendation to move forward?
Have a recommendation, Mr. Covert? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Austin.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David. Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
The amendment passes eight zero.
And it will be on the council agenda for next Tuesday evening.
Second public hearing is proposed amendment to the Springdale Code of Ordinance, Chapter 32 Downtown District Form Based Code, to amend Section 1.2 to add property to the Form Based Code district, and to amend Section 2.1 regulating plan to revise the boundary of the campus type 1.
Austin, can you highlight with your mouth the piece of property we're really talking about? This piece of property was not originally included in the Form Based Code, and the property owner now has requested that it be added as a campus type 1, and then the property that fronts out onto emissaries, property that's owned by the city, and we want to put that all in the same. So we're just adding to the boundary and setting them up as campus type 1.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience?
And again, if this is a recommendation, it'll go to council next Tuesday evening for the amendment to the ordinance.
To the commission?
Recommendation to approve.
Recommendation by Mrs. Mueller?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Amendment passes eight zero. All right. We have our one tabled item, R-21-04, Brian and Melanie Moore Trust Cadence Crossing, 7655 West Gibbs Road. This is rezoning of A1 to a PUD, and there's also preliminary plats and a variance. Preliminary plat 21-01, west side of Gibbs Road, between Harbor Avenue and Nichols Road, and the variance, variance is for the deviation of the PUD size from 10 acres to 5 acres, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. We are requesting this five-acre piece of property to be rezoned from A1 to PUD. This is just north of Harbor on Gibbs Road. We're proposing 26 single-family units on this, on this property. We are requesting a variance for the PUD size. The standard PUD size per code is 10 acres or more, and we're requesting this five-acre tract be allowed to be zoned as a, heard as a PUD. So I'll answer any further questions.
Staff comments?
We've had some discussions over the years about that 10-acre minimum for a PUD. Is there anything magical about that size? I think that's a nice size to deal with, especially if you're doing a combination of commercial and residential. This is a case where they're doing just residential, and we may want to look, and I can tell you, the staff is working on the idea of doing a planned residential district where we could have a different minimum size. You know, we don't want to go down too small, because then you have a whole bunch of PUDs to take care of, but it needs to be a size that's reasonable for development. So I don't think, we have any concern about the variance to allow it to be reduced from 10 acres to 5 acres, and that's the first thing that has to happen, because if we can't go down to 5 acres, then we've got to back up and start again. So that, that's the first action that needs to be taken if the Planning Commission will grant that variance to reduce it from 10 acres to 5.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
If you can come up to the mic, please. And ma'am, if you can state your name and address, please. Thank you.
I'm Reed of Alliance, and I live on Gibbs Road in Springdale.
Okay.
And we were just wondering how many homes will be built in?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? And is the road going to be widened? Is there going to be sidewalks and sewer systems?
We're going to get on to all those details in just a few minutes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. If we can reduce it down to 5 acres, then we're going to go into all that kind of detail, so you know what we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
This is a call for the vote.
I do have one quick question.
Yes.
So if we, if we agree to let this go to 5 acres, does that then make all PUD requests can be 5 acres, and we have to do something different, or just do them one at a time like this?
Right now, there would have to be a variance every time until we do either a change in the PUD ordinance itself-
Okay.
...or create a planned residential. This is just this one time for a variance for this one, but I think-
Doesn't set a precedent for anything?
No.
Okay.
No, not necessarily.
What was the, what was the reason for doing a PUD instead of just immediate medium density rezoning? Another one?
Well, it's a lot size, for one thing.
Yeah, obviously a lot size. We're just trying to create a different product in this area. You know, these are, these are smaller lots. They'll be, they'll have rear entry garages. You know, a lot of the residential around this area is just standard single-family, 70, 80-foot wide lots. So just trying to create a little neighborhood that's a little bit different than what's out there right now.
And it's the size of track you had to work with, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. That, that's kind of a deciding factor, because you've got a 5-acre tract to work with, too. Okay.
I'm glad you just cut through the taste of it now.
Get down to it. It's just the size of the lot.
We're also, we're also encumbered on the south end by a large power line that runs through there, a large easement, so we're just trying to work around those parameters.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Yeah, call for the vote for the variance?
Call for the vote.
Or for the, yeah. Call for the vote for the variance? We do that one before the rezoning, right?
Right.
Okay.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero.
Okay. Now we can get into the details of the rezoning request to the PUD. The adopted Conference of Land use plan indicates medium-density residential for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Conference of Land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspect of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale. With this PUD comes, it comes along with a development plan and a site plan and a set of covenants, and this is a contract between the city and the developer if it's approved. This is how this property is going to be developed. If it is sold, if this PUD is approved, then, and it's sold, that transfers with it. So we know what we're getting, we know what it's going to look like, how it's going to be laid out, and it can only be changed if they come back through this process to make amendments to it. And if y'all remember, we've had some, couple of, well, one PUD that's been back a couple of times for revision, so we know that process works when they want to make changes. So I'm going to go through the details of the PUD documents, so we're all aware of what, what this PUD is going to contain. As we said, it is a five-acre tract, it's 4.95 acres. The project is to be proposed to be constructed as a single phase. Developer wants to begin construction as quickly as practical once construction plans are approved, and they anticipate completing infrastructure construction in 18 months. The development strategy for this project is for 26 single-family residential lots. The entire subdivision will be residential with no commercial uses proposed or allowed. The developer intends to buy, sell, or lease homes on all lots. However, the developer reserves the right to sell lots as market conditions warrant. All homes will either face, will face either the central primary street or toward Gibbs Road, and all will include rear-loaded garages with driveway access from the alleyways, which run along the rear of the lots. Typical lot size will be 35 feet wide by 100 to 110 feet in length. The only permitted uses in this PUD will be city public uses by right, cultural recreational and health facilities, single-family dwellings, zero lot lines, and a model home or temporary marketing office as the project is being developed. The project consists of 26 single-family lots on 5 acres, which is 5.2 units per acre, which is just barely above what we consider to be low income, I mean, low density, which is 4 units per acre. They are proposing a 1 acre provided for green space, which is, which meets the requirement of the 20% minimum required by the code. Most of this is located in the easement that's on the south side of the property, which is an overhead power easement. As I said, the lots will be typically 35 feet wide by 100 to 110 feet deep. They will have front setbacks of 10 feet and side setbacks of either 0 or 10. Is that the way it's set up? Because my, okay.
Yes.
A zero lot line on one side and a 10-foot side setback on the other side, and it will have a 15-foot rear lot, rear setback. It's to provide a style of housing not widely in the area, zero lot lines with rear-loading garages, accessing rear alleyways in a similar configuration to those that are Harbor Meadow The spacing of houses, reduced front lots, yards, and absence of driveways along the primary street will create a living and inviting space with a strong sense of community. The proposed setbacks will allow the single-family homes to be built on the lot as shown on the preliminary plat with small side and front yards to emulate the look and feel of the Harbor Meadows homes discussed above. Look at the preliminary plat that's on the wall. The first lot on each one of those rows, the house will be built on that 10-foot setback off of the street, and then it will have a 10-foot, it will be on that 10-foot setback, and then all the rest of them will be on zero lot lines the rest of the way down, with a 10-foot on the west side of each of the structures along the primary street, and then on the streets that front onto Gibbs Road, well, they start with the same way, starting with the, the building line will be at the edge of the street, and it'll go that direction. Okay? I think that's important to picture. The front building setback is proposed to be 10 feet, which is significantly less than the typical Springdale residential setback of 20 feet. Since the homes all feature rear-loaded garages, one of the primary reasons for needing a large front setback is removed in this development, the proposed setbacks will still allow for a substantial front yard and landscaping for these units and provide space for water and sewer infrastructure. Now, it's proposed that there will be parking on the street, the interior street, not Gibbs Road, and it, and it will be both sides of the street. Correct? The street width that you proposed is the street width that would allow parking on both sides?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. There's a conflict in the, in the covenant, so we need to get that corrected. Rear setbacks are proposed to be 15 feet, which is identical to the rear setback for lots in Harbor Meadows. Each home is required to have a rear-loaded garage with a capacity for at least two vehicles. Front-loading garages or direct access to West Gibbs Road or the central streets are prohibited. The covenants will provide requirements regarding any accessory structures to be placed on the lot. The exterior building material, all of which will be required to be high-quality materials, primary building materials will include brick, stone, manufactured stone, wood, and concrete siding such as Hardy brand. There will be no vinyl siding, except in the soffits in the, and you didn't put that in here. Are you using any vinyl siding on the soffits?
On the soffits, yes, I assume.
Okay. You probably need to add that to the document itself, too. The developer with the Use Unit 34 may operate a temporary sales office and up to two model homes at a time in the development. When will those model, mobile offices or tim, mobile homes or mobile model homes or temporary sales office, when will those go away? At what time in the development of the project will they, they no longer be there? We need to discuss a time limit.
Do you want a time limit or a percentage build-out?
Either one.
Two years.
Okay. So after two years from the start of construction, and that means start of utility work, they'll be gone after that. Okay?
So they'll, they'll be in place within two years, and then, did I hear you say as far as an end date?
I'm looking at the end date, not when it starts. So from start of construction on the utilities and the street work, and when all of the, from two years from that point, all the model homes have to be gone by then?
Let's just do it from final plat. It would be easier.
Okay.
Just from a date standpoint, from the approval of final plat to, for two years.
Rather than approval of the construction plans?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you want all of the infrastructure in, where you have the ability to pull a permit, and from the date that the final plat is approved, you have two years from that.
Yes.
Okay. And we're all clear on that? And that, you guys are, will have to make these amendments before we get to council, so we have all those in there. Okay? Covenants shall include various provisions to ensure the pleasing appearance of the neighborhood is maintained, and which are typical of many developments. This will include requirements related to fences, yard maintenance, and storage of trash cans out of sight from the road. 20% of the property will be reserved to a large POA lot with parking, a tight lot with play structures, and a pavilion with picnic benches and barbecue grills, and access in between lot, mid-block will allow pedestrians to access the POA, and that access needs to be paved. I don't think it shows on the plat itself or in the document, but that needs to be paved. The home builder will be responsible for installation of one tree per lot during house construction. Installation of the tree is a requirement prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Developer will install trees and landscaping in common areas as shown on the landscape plans. Builder and developer shall provide a standard wear-in year warranty for each tree they install. All trees installed by developer and their home builder shall be one of the following species, and they list five different species. A question was raised, is what happens if that tree dies in the front yard? Will the covenants require that it be replaced? Okay, so we need to add that to the covenants, that it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that one tree on each of the lots. Okay? There are three types of street. The east section of Street A, between Gibbs Road and the first intersection with the alleyway, has no lots fronting on it, and includes a median with curb and gutter through the middle of the street. This portion of the street will have a 60-foot wide right-of-way and measure 50 feet from back of curb to back of curb. Sidewalk will be installed along both sides of the street. Is that median to be landscaped? Okay, we need to add that into, and I'm not sure it's on your landscape plan either, that that median will be landscaped. So we need to add landscaping to the median on that, on that drawing as well. The west section of Street A is the portion between the two intersections with alleyways, has lots fronting the street, and does not include a median. The portion of the street will have a 51-foot wide right-of-way and measure 29 feet from back of curb to back of curb. Sidewalk will be installed along both sides of the street, and parking will be allowed on both sides of the street. Okay? The alley, A and Alley B will be 15 feet wide and have a 20-foot wide right-of-way. No curb and gutter or sidewalks are proposed for the alleys. Cut-up parking restrictions, if any, will there be in the alleyways?
No parking on the alleys.
Okay. No parking in the alleys. The project will also include improving the west side of West Gibbs Road to master street plan requirements. This will include dedicating the right-of-way, widening the street, adding curb and gutter, and installing the sidewalk, and install drainage improvements when necessary. And again, I want to note that there will be no access to Gibbs Road for many of these lots. Okay? The project will include a single street connection to West Gibbs Road. There will be a single monument sign at the intersection of the Street A with Gibbs Road. The exterior of the sign will be constructed with primarily stone, brick, and/or metal, and developer will install landscaping along the sign in accordance with the landscape plan. Is that going to be on common property, and if so, it needs to be shown on that, or it will be on one of the lots? Is the sign going to be on common property?
Yes.
Okay. That needs to be noted on the preliminary plat. Okay, we talked about when construction was going to stop, I mean, start. Okay, in the covenants, it says that fences can only be of wood or wrought iron, and that no other fences will be allowed. Now, when you mean by fences, this includes the fence at the front of each one of the lots and between each of, in the backside of the lots? Okay. So they have to be wood or wrought iron, and they can be a height of 6 feet to minimum uniformity. So on the zero lot line side of the house, will the fence pick up at the back corner of the house and go to the property line, I mean, to the, to the end of the property line? It will be on the property line itself?
Yes.
Okay, will there be double fences allowed?
Back-to-back, like, back-to-back fences? No.
No, okay. That needs to be noted. No double fences. And y'all think I'm really picky, but this is how we get everything taken care of, and we all have it in one document. No noxious or offensive activities or nuisance shall be permitted on any lot or parcel. No person shall erect or maintain upon any lot or improvement any sign or advertising except a real estate when the property is listed for sale, provided, however, that the restrictions shall not apply to developer during development and construction of the subdivision. And I just thought about that today. Campaign signs can still go on there, even though you say only real estate signs, because I don't think we can keep those off. So you might want to do something about that. No animals shall be kept or maintained on any lot except the usual household pets, which shall be kept reasonably confined so as not to become a nuisance, and all owners shall comply with applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations concerning animals. Everyone has to have mandatory trash pickup, and I'm assuming the trash receptacles will all be in the alleyways, or will they be on the street?
In the alleys.
Okay. So that's something you have to work out with waste management. Okay? They will only be in the alleyways. There will be no access to any lot on the perimeter. Hold on. Except- Except from designated streets or roads within the subdivision. There will be no drilling, refining, quarrying, or mining applications. No communication mask, cover, or structure may be installed on a lot, except satellite dishes may be installed only on the rear roof of a dwelling, and shall not exceed the height of the lowest roof ridge line of each dwelling. Parking in this section needs to be changed. This is 3.9, because this is parking on the street is allowed, but only on one side of the street. You need to change that. Recreational vehicles and boats may not be stored or parked on the lots. The minimum square footage for the dwellings is 800 square feet of heated area on the first floor and 1,300 square feet overall for all floors. The minimum square footage requirement is exclusive of garages, porches, patios, and decks. Irrespective of the provisions regarding amendments of these court, of these covenants, the minimum square footage requirements cannot be amended, except with the express approval of the developer and the city, because that would be something that would have to come back and be amended with the PUD document itself, so that needs to be changed.
Actually, before you go any further on the parking on the street section, what about many storage, portable many storage type units?
Containers that you can have running?
Yeah, like a Go Mini or something like that, that if they were moving in or something, and they wanted to drop a tray, um.
I assume they just use the driveway in the back, so they just go around the alley and they could drop it in the driveway.
Okay, that's okay, though, okay.
We, that, we would want that on the street itself. It needs to be on each of the individual lots, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because it says either on streets, because I'm saying no semi-trucks or commercial vehicles allowed. I just didn't know if that is considered part of one of those on there. Sorry to be petty about that, but I mean, we just need to understand those things.
Yeah, okay, we need to, we need to address that one and change the language for that. Um, only detached single-family dwellings with a garage, as we said a hundred times. They will have established an architectural review committee that will have to approve in writing any of the structures to be built on any of the lots. Uh, and there is in here the way that architectural review committee is going to be established. All exterior walls of the dwellings erected on the lot shall be finished with high-quality material. Primary building materials will include brick, stone, manufactured stone, wood, and concrete siding such as hardy board. Sofits and fascias may be covered with steel aluminum or concrete composition material. So you don't say final on that, okay? That's what you mean? All roof pitches shall be a minimum of six twelve. No metal roof shall be permitted. Roof shall be covered with shingles using architectural composition or better, okay? Uh, all lots will be maintained, mowed, and kept free of noxious weeds, whether they be improved or unimproved. Uh, there is a provision in here, if the owner allows grass to grow more, such that it is more than four inches high, the developer or the, uh, property owners association has a right, but not the obligation, to have it mowed without giving notice to the owner and shall charge seventy-five dollars or the amount it costs developer or association to have it mowed, whichever is greater. Um, all lots are subject to easement, so they're shown on the plat. The covenants will run with the land. This has a provision where it can, uh, for a period of thirty years, that provision has to stay, it has to come back to the city if it's changed in, in, even after thirty years. Uh, no person is required to register as a sex offender under the, pursuant to the Sex Offender Registration Act of nineteen ninety-seven and Arkansas Code annotated twelve dash twelve dash nine oh one. As amended from time to time, or any other similar federal, state, or local law, regulation, ordinance may rent, reside in, own, or occupy any lot or dwelling in the subdivision either permanently or temporarily. Establishes a homeowner's association, and how that goes into place, I can tell you all about that, but that's just an internal detail. It has an annual assessment for each lot of fifty dollars that goes into the Property Owners Association for maintenance of common areas and that kind of stuff. It all allows for a special assessment for capital improvements, and the method by which that can be, that assessment can be made, how those, uh, assessments are to be collected, and a process for late payment of assessments. It gives the duties of the Board of Directors, uh, the effective non-payment of assessments and liens that are placed by the association of the property. Uh, the lien on the assessments provided for herein shall be subordinate to the lien of any first mortgage or first D or trust now or here ever placed upon the lots. It provides ways where the membership rights can be suspended, and the way that cancellation of hearings can be, can be heard. The detention pond, if it remains on this side, will be maintained by the, uh, on the common property, and the assessments that are given, made to the property owners would maintain that detention pond. Um, it provides what are the property rights of the common properties for the members of the association to use, and any violations outlined if there are problems with that. And I think that's all the details. Okay, I know, do I gotta go back? Somebody's got me, can I go through that again? I can if we need to. So does anybody have any questions about how this is put together?
Any questions or comments in the audience? It's to the commission? It's to be a call for the vote for rezoning?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr.?
I have one concern that I'd, I'd like to ask. And is there pedestrian access from the north half houses down to the common area?
Yes.
There is that access easement that's shown, and it's...
It's, it's between lots, uh, thir- twelve and thirteen. There's a ten-foot access easement, that'll be the pedestrian access, and it will have a sidewalk connection through there.
Okay, that, that's great. Then, did I understand, maybe I misunderstood, how the zero lot line is going to work? So they're going to start in the center and work out from there? Because you couldn't have zero on, on that lot line, right?
Actually, they're going to start being on the first lot on each side of the street. The zero lot line will be on that ten-foot easement, and the second one would be on, you know, to the, to the property line to the west of that, going that direction. So when you get to that center access easement on that one, you would have that ten, five-foot access easement plus the ten-foot side setback for that one, and then the structure on the other side would be set five foot off of the property line. They had to explain that to me, because it, it didn't look like normally what I thought it was going to be. Now, the only concern I have about that access easement going through there, there are not going to be any air conditioning units or anything in that where we have a problem with that. Okay, because we had that once before. We had, uh, some air conditioning units that caused a problem, so. We've, we've addressed that already, too.
Yes.
And it will be paved?
Yes. Five foot sidewalk.
Okay, that's, that answers my question, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? We have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert?
David?
Yes.
Heeler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine zero.
Uh, staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to the council on the twenty-third.
Has a preliminary plat?
Uh, staff comments on it, um, is the only proposed landscaping, the one tree planning. We've discussed that. Um, will there be landscaping included on the P O A lot to enhance the, the shown green space? Because I don't think you show any landscaping on the P O A lot. Is there some on there?
There, there is not currently. Um, we can add some, some lower shrubs, type landscaping in that area. Um, maybe some small trees.
And we already addressed the issue that the access easement will be paved. Uh, the final approval of the preliminary plat will be subject to resolution of all drainage items as they relate to Benedetto subdivision, because it's my understanding you're trying to tie the two together, and the detention pond will go away?
Yes, potentially.
So that, it will just be open area, it won't be a detention pond? And we need that finalized PUD document with the changes that we discussed to go in there. Um, Katie, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any concerns or any engineering questions with this one?
Uh, well, I was going to say show drainage easement around the pond. Um, I did not know they were trying to take the pond away after that. Um, and then, I think you mentioned it already about the street, um, with the ons- on-street parking. I don't think the street, typical street section matches what is shown. It just shows one parking lane on one side.
And they're going to have to revise that. With that width, it would, it would be parking on both sides, okay? Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Anything else, Patsy?
No, in the, the preliminary plat is motion subject to staff comments.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Yeah. You had questions, did we answer your questions? Okay, good.
Motion subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton?
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Preliminary plat passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't, uh, say this before we, uh, started, but we've got a couple of tabled items. Uh, R twenty-one dash ten Chad Reed tabled, that's five sixty West County Line Roads. Uh, R twenty-one dash thirteen CCO Investments, that's tabled, that's twenty-two oh seven East Highway two sixty-four. D twenty-one dash zero six, that's tabled, Dandy Oil Company, seven oh one North Thompson Streets. Uh, Markin and City of Black, our, um, that's a replat twenty-one dash zero five. Twin City Produce, that's tabled, that's large-scale twenty-one dash ten on twenty-fourteen Turnbo Avenue. Uh, and then, expansion of non-conforming use on thousand nine West Huntsville, that is also tabled on it. So those are ones that we will not hear this evening. Um, next section is rezoning. We have R twenty-one dash eleven Luke Hammond, thirty-four forty-four Wagon Wheel Road from A one to C five, presented by Luke Hammond.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, what are we wanting to do here?
Uh, so, we've got a recreational gymnasium. Uh, I've got a business that I've been running in the, in Northwest Arkansas for about four years. Uh, we've got kids from age five to eighteen, have been training basketball side. Um, it's, I've been coaching my whole life, but, uh, the, the gym would be mainly serviced for basketball, and that would ser- right now, we have, uh, over a hundred kids in our program, and, uh, it would help us service more kids in the area.
Okay. Staff comments?
Uh, this is a two-and-a-half acre tract. The, uh, land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Prove the city's economic base and tax structure to the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial developments for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? The C five can, we should probably go through as far as all that's, uh, permitted, uh, in, in a C five, because that's kind of the most wide open that there is of all of them.
A C five zone allows for citywide uses by riot, cultural, recreational, and health facilities, institutional facilities, office studios, and related services, eating places, hotel, motel, and entertainment facilities, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, parking lot, auction houses, open display retail sales, uh, church synagogue, healthcare facility, flea market indoor, commercial assembly. By conditional uses are conditional uses, citywide uses by conditional use permit, utilities, commercial large site, dedicated warehouse, limited manufacturing, recreational vehicle park, recycling collection facilities, self-supporting towers, monopoles, transportation services, temporary services, mobile vending site.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission? The only comment that I have on here is, is, uh, I mean, there's a lot of, like, building type of industry that's, or, or companies, uh, commercial, um, that has gone into that area. Um, you know, all I'm, all I'm addressing is the, the vast amount of, um, businesses that can go into this whole piece here, so.
Well, the type of use he's proposing needs the C five zoning, and that's why we went, we went that direction to go C five.
Okay.
And he will be required to submit a large-scale developer plan, how he's going to lay out the piece of property. Are you keeping the existing house, or is it going away?
Yes, keeping the existing house.
Okay, is it going to be for offices?
That will be my residence.
Okay, once you're rezoned to C five, it is a non-conforming use, which means it can be expanded?
Right.
Uh, you can, are you living there now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if it ever is vacant for more than six months, you can't reopen it as a residential structure, okay? And then we'll have to work around that with the development, but those are development issues that we have to talk about when you get to that point.
Absolutely.
Okay. And you can't do any work on it till you get an approved large-scale development plan?
Well, it, we've, like, levels, dirt work isn't work, is it, like?
Did you get a grading permit?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I would suggest you contact engineering tomorrow before you do anything else, okay?
We haven't, we haven't really done anything, we've just kind of...
You took the trees and stuff down, I do know that.
Yeah, we took trees down, yes, ma'am.
But before you start moving dirt, you need to get a, a grading permit, and it will depend on where we are in the processes to how soon you can get one of those.
Absolutely.
Okay?
This will be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Ms. Mueller?
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Heeler?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-third.
Thank you. What, one of the comments that I will have as far as when you do get into your large-scale submission, uh, and I'm just putting this out there on its is, is that, um, um, the facades and things like that, um, make sure you guys understand all of the, the requirements associated with it.
Yes, sir, the beautification and, pretty similar to what I've seen across the street, the half, the brick up the halfway, is that correct?
You need to get your architect to sit down with staff, and we'll go over the details.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, because financial burdens and things like that, I mean, those are things that can't be considered in there, and, and so, just need to make sure. I'm just trying to help you expedite what you want to get accomplished in it, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, and the architects know that very well.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Next item, R twenty-one dash twelve, uh, Old Missouri East LLC, sixteen oh nine Old Missouri Road from I one to I two, presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Good evening, this is Nathan Spirit with McClellan Engineers. Uh, request tonight is to rezone the eleven point six five acre site located at sixteen oh nine Old Missouri Road from I one to I two to allow for scrap metal and refuse collection use. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates heavy industrial use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Encourage the development of industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base that are compatible to the labor force, raw materials, and industrial climate, provide space for new and expanding high-technology industries with low environmental impact, and consolidate industrial areas and traffic arteries and collectors' rail and air facilities and major utility trunk lines.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? This will be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller?
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Uh, next section, preliminary plats, replats, final plats, preliminary plat twenty-one dash zero three, Benedetto subdivision phase two, southwest Gibbs Road, and north of Harbor Avenue, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. Uh, we're bringing this plat revision back to you. Uh, this was previously approved in two thousand fourteen timeframe, I believe. Um, very similar road configuration. Um, we are showing thirty-eight buildable lots with two P O A areas, um, near kind of that central, uh, central area. We'll have a, a pool and a clubhouse, um, and then kind of a green space, um, under the power easement, um, i- is proposed with this revision, so I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
This revision is really because the detention pond went away. You've been able to secure drainage improvements off-site.
Yes, it, it, yes.
Property to the east, and so that allowed you to put more lots in than what we originally had.
That is correct.
Had approved, and the structures to be built will not be built in the power line easement itself, like the pool is not under the power line. It's just outside it, only parking will be.
Only the parking.
Yeah, okay, yeah. There's not any planning comments. Uh, Katie, do you have any engineering comments on this?
No, I don't.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
This is really a motion subject to staff comments.
It's to the commission? To the commission? Have a motion? Motion subject staff comments? Motion by Mr. Covert. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Preliminary plat passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Next item, replat 21-06, Vic Enterprises, Lot 7, Block 4, Howard Acres subdivision, presented by Blue and Associates.
This is Wes Licker with Blue and Associates. We're proposing a replat of Lot 7, Block 4, the Howard Acres subdivision. The purpose of this replat is to cut off the southern .3 acres from the house that exists above. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Staff comments?
Does, will each of these lots have sewer service, or do you have perk tests to say that they can be put on? Two structures can be on these two lots.
All right, so the lot to the north already has an existing septic system. The one to the south that they're going to develop with the new residential house, I believe what they want to do is put a septic system on that. They have not had a perk test performed yet, they're in the process of getting that done now.
Okay, in the past, we've held all of those till we know that it can actually perk. Now, do you show the septic system on the lot to the north, and that it's all contained on this lot?
Yes, yeah, every, all that's contained onto the lot to the north.
Okay, this replat can't move forward until we have that perk test, and it shows that the lot side would be sufficient to handle that, okay?
Okay.
There's some existing buildings that encroach on the lot lines, and they need to be removed before the replat is filed as well. Are they being moved or torn down, or what's the issue?
Yeah, they're going to remove those two structures.
Okay, those would need to be done before the replat could be finalized as well. Are there any engineering comments?
No, no comments on this one.
We have our standard comments of what has to be on the plat itself, the signature blocks and all that, that are standard comments, and those have already been provided to you.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission, this will be a motion.
Is there a sewer system within 300 feet of the property?
There is a sewer line that is on, I believe they have a stubout probably, because there isn't an existing manhole there. But on the north side of Lot 1 of the adjacent subdivision to the west, there is a sewer line that's over there that's inside of the 20-foot utility easement, and that's shown on the survey, if you have that in front of you.
Okay, doesn't the state have a rule that if you're within 300 feet, they wouldn't approve a septic system?
That's my understanding, that's why I'm asking. It either has to be hooked to the sewer, or the state, the health department has to agree to allow it to happen before we can move forward with this. Have you had any discussions with Springdale Water Utilities about connecting this to the sewer system?
I believe our client has spoke with them about doing it. I don't exactly know what their conversation was with regards to it. And I'm not even 100% sure if where that sewer got built, if it's actually within the 300-foot distance that you're talking about. It might actually end up being further than that.
Okay.
This is what we're shown on the plat, it's just based off of the GIS. However, there isn't a manhole in that location, when we tried to verify it in the field.
Okay, I'll say it one more time, this cannot move forward as a replat until we know that, one or the other. It has to be verified that it can be hooked to the sewer, or the health department has to agree, or has to give a permit for a septic system on that lot. So if it is recommended for approval tonight, it will not go to council for the replat to be approved until those documents have been provided, and then we will let it go to council after that's happened, okay?
Okay, correct, yes.
Or you can table it until we have that information, if you would rather do that.
We'll get the information, I believe, I've just got a text from our client, he says that the, he's talked to Springdale and it's further than 300 feet. So, they're going to move forward with the septic system.
Okay, but there again, you have to have health department approval for the septic system before it can move forward.
Yes, yes.
And it's up to the planning commission whether you want to table it, or you want us to hold it until we get that information.
Please hold it.
I didn't hear that last part.
Oh, I'm sorry, please hold it.
You want us to just table it until you get that information, then?
Hold it, please.
Okay, when you say hold it, to me that says we're going to table this till you get the information to have it, and if you have it by next month, it'll be back on the agenda next month.
Okay, so my option is to have it tabled, or? Or what?
Well, if the planning commission is willing to take action on it, we won't let it go to council until we have that information. The question is, do you want, and the planning commission has to decide whether they want it tabled, or whether they wanted to go ahead and take action on it, and staff not let it go forward until the other information is there. That's their call.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information that we don't have, I'd recommend it to be tabled because of the fact we're making a decision on only at best 30% of the correct information.
Is that your motion to table?
That is my motion, yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
I have a second, I have a motion by Mr. Covert, and a second by Mr. Tyler to table this until we have the appropriate information from the health department and the appropriate perk test done.
Put on that motion.
Yeah.
Tyler?
Just, did you have that clearly represented in there, though?
Yeah, that you could table it until we get further from the. Well, titling it will automatically put it on the agenda next month. If we don't have that information, it will not be on there again, and they will have to notify adjacent property owners again if we don't have it in time.
And that'll still just be an approval from the city council as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
The motion to table this until we have the further details passes nine zero.
Again, I will remind you, if you do not have the information to staff for the next meeting, if it is tabled again, you will have to start all over with notification to the adjacent property owners.
Got it.
All right, thank you. Next section is large-scale development. L 21-12 Chick-fil-A, 5601 West Sunset Avenue, presented by Grayden Engineering.
Good evening, council members and staff, my name is Todd Rogers, I'm a civil engineer for Chick-fil-A. My address is 125 Town Park Drive, Kennesaw, Georgia. We're looking to develop a two-acre out parcel within the crossings development at the intersection of West Sunset and Jean George. It's the latest prototype building, which provides modern design aesthetics and custom finishes. The drive-through lane is designed, two lanes, excuse me, which are continuous to the entire drive-through. Both lanes can be utilized to take orders, payment, and order fulfillment. There are two canopies within the drive-through lanes that the employees can stand under on iPads and take orders, and deliver food to the cars. We have 76 parking spaces, 43 car stack, I believe it's 92 indoor seats, and a patio outside for dining. I'm available to try and answer any questions you might have.
Staff comments?
I always get asked the question, is the traffic going to flow better at this one than they do in other places? And I can guarantee you, we work really hard to make sure it does, because we all know how Chick-fil-A backs up traffic. So I think they've done a really good job of laying it out on this site. We have our standard comments about addressing other comments from utility companies and underground utilities. There is one thing we probably need is clarification on the scale of the lording fixtures around the patio area. We can work that out internally, that's the only comment I have. Katie, do you have anything?
No, no comments from us either.
And so this does not have any variances, because it's part of the whole district there?
Right, it has no variances, they've worked through everything, they came in with a great design. It has the stone that's required, the signs will be designed like they're supposed to be. We've been working on this a while, and it's a, it's a, one of the things we've been waiting for in Springdale for a long time.
Signage is consistent as well.
The signage is consistent with the requirements of the district, we've been through all that, and, because there are no variances to the sign ordinance, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? This will be a motion?
Motion to approve.
You jumped on that right away, didn't you? He likes chicken.
With great gratitude.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
The large-scale for Chick-fil-A passes nine zero. So you can finally tell all your friends and family that Chick-fil-A is in Springdale. I almost waited till the very end on this one, just to wait a little bit longer on that whole thing, but, thank you, guys, I appreciate that one. Next item, L 21-13 Plaza Tire Service, 3049 East Robinson Avenue. It's also variance for deviation of commercial design standards. A, the facades, B, building foundational landscaping, presented by CEI Engineering.
Good evening, Nate Bachelor here from CEI Engineering, here to present to you the request for approval. Plaza Tire Store, East Robinson Avenue, as mentioned, sits on approximately 1.5 acre lot, being 6,800 square feet of the building itself. Will have eight bays for service, providing 32 parking spaces on site with required stormwater management, as well as reusing the location of existing driveway at the front of the property. Primarily, the parking is provided at the sides and rear with some accessible spaces in the front, as you can see on the map there. We do have two variance requests. The building foundation landscaping, let's talk about item number B first. The required six feet of green space along the facade on the north side is met with this development, but the east and west, we've requested reduction down to three feet for that. And nature of the hardship has to do with the size of the lot, it's a very deep lot, very shallow. We don't, we don't need the entire depth of the property, but the narrowness of it constrained the development with providing adequate means of access in and out of the service bays, the parking on either side. So we request the variance down to three feet for the building foundation landscaping, only on the east and west sides. The facade of the structure, proposed in the packet there, you will see the architectural elevations consisting of painted split-face CMU. The east side having the roll-up bays, the eight bays there, showing the art, showing the brick piers and columns, accenting the center and the front and rears of the store. Similar treatment on the west side of the structure, but the request is for the painted CMU and the articulation, the three feet of articulation, for the facade being a little over 100 feet in length. So the reason, again, we're requesting that variance on the articulation is for safety in and out of those service bays. We can accomplish a similar look and feel, and meet the intent of the ordinance by providing the brick accents that you see on the plan today. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Staff comments?
We need a 24-month guarantee for all landscaping?
After, is that a bond, or is that a letter of credit, or just an acknowledgement from the developer?
It could just be a note on the plan set.
Yeah, okay.
Understood.
And Austin, do you want to address the variances, because you're much more versed in this than I am?
Yeah, I think Nate did a pretty good job of laying those out. This is revolving around the three feet of articulation that would be required for the 100 feet in length on the west and east elevation, as well as the building foundation landscaping that he mentioned.
We would request additionally, there was one staff comment received just before this meeting with the request to use integrally colored CMU, requesting that the exterior facades be painted as part of that variance on the facade.
And the reason being?
The, the paint is offered in a multitude of additional colors. It's going to be a high-quality material, it'll be split-face CMU. The paint also acts as an additional water barrier for intrusion of water through the permeable CMU.
Katie, do you have any engineering comments?
No, no comments on this one.
Anything else?
Austin, anything else?
I believe that's it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
You can do the variance first.
Any questions on the variances? This will be a call for the vote on the variances. We can do them individually or together.
I'd prefer together unless there's opposition.
We can do the variances together, I did want to make one comment, that we've had some drainage complaints in this area in the past, so I'm sure that they've met the drainage criteria manual, but just want to note that there have been problems downstream from this site.
Katie, are you aware of the drainage issues downstream?
No, I had not been made aware of drainage issues. I do know that they proposed a level spreader on the outlet of this detention pond to retain sheet flow as it leaves the site.
And the pond is tucked up as close to the parking lot as possible there to allow for additional, additional length of flow between it and the adjoining property owners. So the level spreader acts to spread out the level of the flow, rather than a point source discharge, and then the additional 60 feet to the neighboring fence line should assist us with matching the existing flow characteristics.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so have a call for vote by Mr. Covert for both of these? Yes, please.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero, have a motion on the large scale? Motion to approve, subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Covert, have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yep.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Large-scale passes nine zero.
Thank you for your time.
Next section, board of adjustments, we have B 20-14, Francisco and Adriana Sains, 294 Trevi Fontana Plaza, variance for deviation of front setback from 30 feet to 16 and a half feet, presented by Francisco and Adriana Sains, Joy Ryan Jones.
Hello, I'm here for a variance of, from the front setback from a storage in my backyard.
Okay, can you state your name for the?
Adriana Sains.
Okay.
This vacation of the utility easement has gone to council, and council has approved it, which would allow for this variance for the setback.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? This will be a call for the vote. Call for vote, call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, B 21-17, Victor Ortiz, 1129 Jefferson Street, variance for deviation of paving requirement with a two-year bill of assurance, presented by Victor and Rolando Ortiz. Ortiz?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that. Want to tell me a little bit about this here?
Well, I did, we put gravel down on the property because of the soil was so soft, and it kept on tracking out into the road, so I figured I was, to avoid any problems, I put gravel down, but on the property, part of the property, which I didn't know it was. it was a coal violation, so I was told that I had to do hard surface on it, and I'm kind of wondering if we could actually do like asphalt on it instead of concrete?
Can you do asphalt instead of concrete? The structure that's at the back, that was built as an accessory structure to a single-family home?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not used for a business, correct?
No.
Okay.
It's just a storage for my personal stuff.
Okay, okay. Now, there was, Austin, did you find a previous bill of assurance on this piece of property?
No, we weren't able to get a bill of assurance.
Okay. Ed, do you have any background on this to provide, because I think this property's been in before.
That was whenever I requested a permit to build what's that shop in the back, the storage.
Okay. Ed, you want to address that? Was he told at the time he'd have to have paid parking for that structure?
At the time, we didn't think he was going to have any parking. He was, he wanted to build a shop, build an accessory to the, it was accessory structure to the resident that's in the industrial zone. I do believe previously, a previous owner, they had a paving issue, heavy equipment. They were not granted a variance and they moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why we remember it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I looked through everything and I couldn't find, but I knew there was some discussion about heavy equipment being stored at that. That's why I asked you what the building was going to be used for.
Okay.
Okay, so the, he built a building without a permit and that got all taken care of, correct?
He got a permit.
Okay.
The permit was issued for an accessory structure to the residence. It's still that, I understand, I just heard.
Okay, so he's not using it for a business. He's just driving back and forth, so he has to pave it even if he uses it just as an accessory structure?
The paving didn't come from us. I think that came from code enforcement.
That came from code enforcement.
Yeah.
Did they think that you were operating a business there?
I have my trailers in there.
That are personal, you don't use in a business?
Well, I have, I own a business that's registered and we've got our offices here in Springdale, but I don't contact other than park my trailers there.
Can you pull that mic around?
Oh, like I said, we have a business, but it's, the only use that we use that for, it's for parking trailers, my trailers. But we have our business, our offices are here in Springdale. That's where we register and we work off of that. We don't have anything else other than trailers in there.
But those trailers aren't at this location.
Those are not what again?
Are not at this location.
They are, some of them are that, yeah, are at that location.
But you are operating a business on that one.
That's the problem. If you're taking your trailers that you're using for your business and operating and parking them at this location. I couldn't figure out how we got into this.
Okay, okay.
What is your business?
Construction.
Okay, so you're taking some of your trailers that you use on construction site and parking them?
And we parked them there.
So there's really not an accessory used to a single-family residence then?
Okay.
Okay. Do we know how this property is zoned? I thought the house was a non-conforming use.
Yeah, the zoning is industrial.
It's owned industrial.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why you have to have the park. Okay, now we understand why we have to have parking.
All right.
Okay. What area were you told that you would need to pave? Because we don't have any idea if you have to, are you parking around, you can't even see the structure on this?
We've got the building on the right upper corner, so from the bottom left corner, that's where we have our entryway and we, and we put gravel all in that area to get to it. And I put gravel down where we would park the trailer, up against the upper part. That's where we got a fence and that's where we park our trailers to keep any, any mud off the road.
Okay, it's a little hard for us to grant a bill of assurance on something we don't know exactly where it's located and how, what the distance is. So my suggestion would be that we table this and come back with a drawing that shows where you've put the gravel and how much it's going to be. Now, if, if you can do asphalt, are you still going to ask for the two-year?
Yes.
Okay.
On asphalt, because it's, it covers a good section in there. I mean, I'm open to whatever is going to solve the problem. If we need to do a part of it, if we got to remove any gravel, it's fine.
Okay. We really need some kind of an idea of what the area is.
Okay.
And so can you come back with a drawing that shows where the actual location of the gravel is and where you're proposing that you want the bill of assurance?
Sure.
Okay. I just, I can't recommend that we do this if we don't really know what we're talking about.
No, I agree.
Do we have anybody from code enforcement online or here?
Oh, I think so.
We've got a newer Google Earth version.
Yeah.
Have you seen it?
I've seen the Google Earth version of it.
I mean, it gives you a better.
Yeah, the Google Earth kind of shows where the gravel is.
Okay, when, how long's the gravel been down?
I'm going to say about six months now.
Austin, can you get to Google Earth back there? We can try. There again, we don't have a drawing that shows exactly what it's going to be. How much parking spaces did they tell you you needed to have?
He didn't say. All he said was, since I got gravel and it's not permitted, I gotta do a hard surface. I can't have any gravel.
Okay. Let us talk with Ron and we can come up with that and table this to next month and then we will know exactly what we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay, does that work for everybody?
Yeah, the only comment I was going to make is it may be helpful to have someone from code here if they're going to have things on the docket for us to try and understand. It's just really, really hard and it's not fair to the, to the citizens that have to try and explain it.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Come back next month.
All right.
You'll be at the first of the agenda next month.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, B twenty-one dash eighteen, Nelson Anaya, thirty-six eleven Plano Avenue, deviation of rear setback from twenty feet to ten feet, presented by Nelson Anaya. If you can come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm translating for Nelson. I'm just his nephew. This is Nelson Anaya and he just wants to build a porch in his home in the backyard because the door's getting rotten with all the water coming in. It's like coming on top of the, like inside, it's going inside the, almost kind of inside the house, so the door's kind of rotting.
Okay, so he's wanting to put a canopy over the back door. How, how big of a, has he already built one or is he asking permission to do that?
He's asking permission to build the porch.
Okay. Ed, have you seen any drawings of, of what we're talking about?
He'll need to come up to the mic for just a second.
No, obviously someone talked to him and he's getting his variance before he gets permit.
Good, we like that. We like for it to work that direction. So how, how big of a porch are you putting on there?
Um, he says he has some pictures here of the, of the backyard.
Okay, it's a twenty-foot backyard?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much. So what's the, the length of the porch that you want to put from the edge of the wall out toward the fence? I'm assuming you want ten feet.
Uh-huh. So the front, he said, yes, ten feet. Uh-huh. So he doesn't know from the long, but from the front, he said ten feet.
Okay. So that, that's the variance that we're talking about. It would be closer than, it would be in the twenty-foot setback. It would extend ten feet into that and then the length of the house, you wouldn't go any wider than the length of the house?
No, it would not go any wider than that.
Because it wouldn't need a side setback then. You would only need the rear setback being reduced to ten feet.
Is it just a patio or does it also have a canopy on it as well?
It's just going to be like a wooden porch.
Yeah, he wants the wooden structure over the door to keep the rain from coming in.
Okay, so.
Not enclosing the sides. You would just be putting up posts?
Yeah.
On the end, okay, yeah. And pouring a concrete slab for the whole thing?
Yes, yes.
So the overhang on that is still going to be within that?
The overhang would have to be, the edge of the overhang would be, have to be at ten feet.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not the concrete, but the overhang.
Okay.
If, if this is granted, you need to get with building inspection with a drawing so that you can verify the measurements that you can do based on if we give you this variance to ten feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Yep.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero.
Okay, so you can go up to ten feet. You need to get with the building inspection office to get a permit so you can verify all of the dimensions.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for doing it in this order.
Okay, thank you.
Many times it's built before we find out about it. Okay, next item, B twenty-one dash twenty-one, DCSB Holdings LLC, Blades Landscaping, thirteen eighty Butterfield Coach Road, variance for deviation of eight-foot fence height and paving requirements with two-year bill of assurance, presented by Derek Deaton.
How are y'all doing? I'm Derek Deaton. I'm owner of Blades Landscaping and we have a property on thirteen eighty Butterfield Coach Road that is owned C two, and whenever we bought the property, we didn't know that we were going to have to do paving, so now we realize we have to do the paving and just need a little more time to get it all done.
You have a drawing that shows what area you're talking about, maybe you do have?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you're asking for a variance for all of that area to be paved within two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the eight-foot, the extension of the height of the fence to eight feet, what, where will that be?
That is on the outside, everything. That's the outline of the property and right now we have a privacy fence of six foot and didn't know that it had to be eight foot. So basically, everything on the, from the side of the house, all the way around the backside and back to where we have the entrance, all of that is six foot right now.
So that wall will be changed to eight feet?
Yes.
And they're doing landscaping in front of that fence because you are a landscaping company, correct?
Yes, that's why we did it up.
That's why we got the drawing with the landscaping and we got the sign ordered actually today,
so hoping to get all that taken care of here pretty soon.
Austin, are we missing anything? Can't hear you. Okay.
I don't think your mic's on back there, but, okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Take them together or separate, whichever way you want to do them.
Paul, I'll have to recuse on this one.
Recuse?
I'll be recused on this one, so I said that's whatever you want.
Have a call?
A recommendation to?
A call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
And we want to do them together?
Sure, let's do that.
So a call for the vote by Dr. Compton?
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Recused.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
We have eight yeses and one recused. This passes on here.
You need to get with staff so we can draw up the bill of assurance document so it can be signed and filed on that piece of property.
All right. Appreciate it, thank y'all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item is the waivers. We have W twenty-one dash zero-two, Miguel and Don Jimenez, nine thirteen South Spring Creek Road, request for sidewalk waiver presented by Miguel and Don Jimenez.
Yes, this is Miguel Jimenez. I built the house in nine thirteen Spring Creek Road and so I would, I got a house in there, but it's, sidewalk is really, it's kind of not makes sense to how to do the sidewalk on the, on the house size, so that's why I'm here.
Staff comments?
Well, this, this is a lot, it would have a lot of sidewalk because it has it on that, that, that crossroad across through there and then along Spring Creek Road as well. Ed, do y'all have any, any, I mean, I'm sure his building permit said that he was to build a sidewalk. Are you asking to not build any sidewalk at all on this location?
No, build any sidewalk at all.
Okay.
That, I don't know if you, you see the property, but it's right on the, on the new highway that built in there. It's right next to the, to the, to the bridge that cross, cross right to the new highway underneath and the top is the Spring Creek.
Is there, is there a sidewalk across the bridge? Is there a sidewalk across the bridge?
No.
Okay, I didn't think there was either, there either. So there's really, I mean, I don't normally recommend waiver sidewalks, but this one's kind of out there in the middle of nothing. I don't see it being connected to a whole lot of other sidewalks, so.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
This is a recommendation to council.
Recommendation, recommendation to move forward to council with staff comments?
Recommendation?
But to waive the report?
To waive, correct.
Recommendation by Mr. Covert to waive the sidewalk waiver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton?
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?